All right, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 11th, Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. We're all glad that you are here or watching online. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with the introductions of the folks on our dais. And we've got, starting on my left, our Teacher of the Year, Madison Little. Welcome. And we have our Board members, Shannon Lancaster, Catherine Moore, Sam Tredaway, our Superintendent, Dr. John Kupicki, myself, Board Chair Rob Walter, our Vice Chair Greg Mills, and Board Members Pam Escobar and Melanie Freeman. And our SRO for the evening, if he's in the back there, is our Deputy Tyler Crabtree from Mount Pleasant High School. We welcome that you're here, glad that you're here this evening as well. We don't have any student performances, so we are going to go ahead and do our opening ceremony with a Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item number three is setting our Board Agenda. That's been on Board Chair's Board Doc since last week. Everybody's had a chance to review that. I would need a motion and a second to approve our Agenda for the evening. Okay. Ms. Freeman, you have a second. Thank you very much, Ms. Lancaster. Any further discussion? With that, all in favor of adopting our budget for our, our budget, our Agenda for the evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have our Agenda, and we will move right on into our Recognitions. And we have several people in the room tonight, and we're looking forward to that. And our first one is 4.01. We have Hickory Ridge Middle School VEX, and we have Ms. Rebecca Welsher, Jennifer Callan. Are you guys here? You are. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you to the members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki and Mr. Walter, for having us tonight. It is my absolute honor and privilege to stand before you tonight to celebrate something truly exceptional by recognizing a group of students, parents, and their coach and admin from Hickory Ridge Middle School. This group has gone above and beyond, not only in the classroom, but in the world of innovation, engineering, and teamwork. Please join me in congratulating our very own Cyber Phantoms Robotics Team for qualifying to compete at the 2025 VEX Robotics World Championship. This is no small achievement. The Cyber Phantoms have earned their place on one of the biggest stages in STEM education. Over the course of three days, the Cyber Phantoms, along with 420 other middle school teams from 56 countries across the globe competed in Dallas, Texas. They met and competed with teams from Hong Kong, China, Germany, India, the UK, and the US, just to name a few. Through months of dedication and problem solving, long after-school hours, and a whole lot of trial and error, they built more than just a robot. They built a team grounded in perseverance, passion, and collaboration. To the students, you've shown what's possible when talent meets hard work. To Mrs. Moore, thank you for your unwavering guidance and support and your continued dedication to the VEX Robotics Program. And to the families, your encouragement behind the scenes has been a huge part of this success. Cyber Phantoms, you are pioneers, you are leaders, and you are a shining example of what Cabarrus County Schools stands for. On behalf of the entire Cabarrus County VEX Robotics Program, congratulations and go Cyber Phantoms.
Do you want to get everybody together right here? We're very proud of these young men. Big things ahead for them, too. Next item is 4.02, which is our CTE Recognitions. We have Ms. Melanie Ritter, are you here? Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki and Mr. Walter. I am excited to present some CTE Recognitions this evening. I am the Pro Director of Career and Technical Education here in Cabarrus County Schools, and I'd like to welcome to the front our Mount Pleasant Career and Technical Education Team, along with the Administration and any family members.
We are very proud to have two Recognitions from Mount Pleasant this evening. We're going to begin. We're proud to recognize Mr. Anthony Heron, our Electrical Trades Teacher at Mount Pleasant High School, and his student, Justin Kyle. He's a 2025 graduate, and I'd like to recognize them for their outstanding achievement in career and technical education. Under Mr. Heron's expert instruction and mentorship, Justin earned the title of NC Skills USA Electrical Champion, demonstrating exceptional technical skill, problem-solving ability, and professionalism in his craft. His accomplishment not only highlights Justin's hard work and dedication, but also showcases the strength of the Electrical Trades Program at Mount Pleasant High School. Mr. Heron's commitment to providing rigorous, hands-on learning experiences has prepared his students for success in both competition and future career pathways, making this recognition a proud moment for Mount Pleasant High School, our district, and our community. Congratulations. Our second recognition for Mount Pleasant High School is for Ms. Katie Coffin-Dulaney, Agriculture Education Teacher and FFA Advisor at Mount Pleasant High School. She's been named the Cabarrus County Schools NC CAT Teacher of the Year, an honor that celebrates her outstanding dedication to teaching, leadership, and student success. Through her passion for agriculture education and commitment to the FFA Program, she has created countless opportunities for students to develop hands-on skills, leadership abilities, and a deeper appreciation for agriculture's role within our community. Known for inspiring her students to reach their fullest potential, Katie fosters a classroom environment where learning is engaging, relevant, and connected to real-world experiences. Her recognition as NCAT Teacher of the Year reflects her exceptional impact on both her students and the broader school community. Congratulations.
We have one more. I'd like to welcome to the front, Ms. Allison Finley, with her family and the Coxmo High School Administration.
Ms. Allison Finley has been named the North Carolina ACTE New Teacher of the Year, recognizing her dedication, innovation, and impact in career and technical education. In just her early years of teaching, she has connected with students, sparked curiosity, and inspired them to explore future career pathways. As a marketing teacher, Adobe Express Trainer, and a DECA Advisor at Coxmo High School, she has built a thriving chapter that offers real-world business leadership and competition experiences. Known for creating a dynamic classroom that blends hand-on learning, industry connections, and practical applications, she is committed to fostering both academic and personal growth for every student. This honor also reflects her leadership in the CTE community as she actively pursues professional growth, integrates cutting-edge resources, and empowers students through DECA to lead, compete, and apply their skills in real-world settings, promising a lasting impact on career and technical education in North Carolina. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Dr. Kupicki?
Melanie, can you hang on one sec? So I know you're too humble to say this and to admit this, however, cat's out of the bag. So Melanie just acknowledged and recognized the CTE Teachers of the Year and the winners, and congratulates to them because it's an outstanding tribute to the hard work that they give and the school, and the excellence that they bring to the classroom as teachers. But Melanie herself, and we'll do a recognition next month at the next board meeting, was also acknowledged by the organization as one of the Leaders of the Year, too. So again, that speaks to her leadership. It's nice to see the teachers do really well, but our own Melanie Ritter was recognized for her leadership as one of the state winners, too. So congratulations to you, and thank you for your leadership as well.
Well deserved. Thought you'd get away, huh? Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Rob.
Well, that was a nice bonus recognition. Next one is 4.03, the Everyday Hero Award. We have Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Ms. Stephanie Almond to the podium to share with, share us that recognition.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, members of the Board, and Dr. Kupicki. If I could have Ms. Sherri Peel join us down front, any special guests that may be with This evening, it is once again my pleasure to be able to stand before you and recognize this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, this monthly award recognizes a member from our Auxiliary Services Team who consistently goes above and beyond by impacting the lives of others through kindness, selflessness, and an unwavering dedication to service. In education, we often speak of the teachers, principals, and students, and rightfully so. But we know the heartbeat of our schools depends on the behind-the-scenes incredible work of our Auxiliary Services Team. Tonight, we gather, not just to celebrate a job well done, but to recognize someone whose dedication, hard work, and quiet leadership have made a lasting difference in our school system. What sets this individual apart is not just their quality of work, but the heart behind it. They approach each task with pride, integrity, and a steadfast belief that every role in the school system, no matter how big or how small, contributes to the success of our students. Today, we honor Ms. Sherri Peel, School Nutrition Assistant at Bethel Elementary School, as our August Everyday Hero Award recipient. Joining me here tonight is Ms. Stephanie Almond, our Director of School Nutrition Services. And Ms. Almond is going to share with you why Ms. Peel was chosen as this month's most worthy recipient.
Ms. Peel has been an SMP Assistant with us at Bethel Elementary since 2024. She was nominated for this award by her manager, Ms. Darlene Miller. Several colleagues and parents have also commended her in the past. Sherri consistently goes above and beyond in her role, demonstrating exceptional initiative and dedication. She proactively seeks ways to support the team, often arriving early or staying late to ensure smooth operations when needed. Her ability to anticipate needs and take ownership of tasks, such as independently ensuring the line is fully prepared and that others are on track, contributes significantly to the cafeteria's success. A true team player, Sherri seamlessly steps into any position during lunch service and handles multiple responsibilities with ease. Her enthusiasm and genuine care for the students shine through her daily interactions. She regularly brings joy to the cafeteria by dressing up for holidays, they are the best, and special occasions, creating a festive and welcoming atmosphere. Sherri takes the time to connect with students, even leading the team and singing "Happy Birthday" to students celebrating their special day. Sherri goes out of her way to ensure students feel seen and supported as well. For instance, when she noticed one child frequently returning for more food, she gently encouraged him to select all the foods available to him in order to ensure he left satisfied and nourished. Beyond her daily responsibilities, Sherri also takes the initiative to decorate the cafeteria bulletin boards, adding a personal and cheerful touch to the space. Her creativity, positivity, and genuine investment in the well-being of students and her team make her an invaluable asset to the school community. We're grateful for her work as this month's Everyday Hero. Congratulations.
That was, concludes that section of our Agenda. Moving on, we have Section 5, which is the Approval of Minutes. There are three minutes for us to review and approve tonight. We have the minutes from our meeting on June 30th, our combined meeting on July 14th, and then our special called meeting on the 22nd of last month. Board members, if you had time to review, are there any changes? If not, I'd need a motion and a second to approve.
I believe we approved the minutes as presented, for all three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Tredaway. Anybody second? Ms. Escobar, any further, any further discussion? All right, with that, let's vote. All in favor of approving our minutes as presented for these three meetings? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, our meeting, our meeting minutes for last month and June 30th were, have been approved. Moving on to our Section 6, which is Chair and Superintendent Comments versus Chair Comments. I guess we're all excited about the beginning of the new school year, and we welcome our students to our buildings today. Obviously, we're excited. We've got Mr. Mills here with his very bright collage, education collage, and I'm wearing an aviation tie that kind of signifies taking off and navigating a new school year. So recently, we had the opportunity to deliver some school supplies to some of the schools, and I had a lot of people invite us as a Board to different things that they're doing at schools. And maybe people don't realize, yeah, you can invite Board members to things going on in classrooms or opportunities for events, or just to show us something that you think that needs our attention. So our contact information is on the website, so please look that up and feel free to reach out to us for anything that you think is, would like to show us. So with that, I will move on to our next section, which is Superintendent Comments, and Dr. John Kupicki.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I would just like to echo some of the same sentiments that you just expressed, specifically thanking several groups of people that helped us pull off a wonderful opening over the 25-26 school year. And those would be, first and foremost, the Concord Police Department and a Cabarrus Sheriff's Office, and all the deputies that work to keep us safe and are in our schools on a daily basis. Their presence is always felt and always seen, but it's always great at the beginning of the year. They're out there in extra force, and a lot of their colleagues come out and help us start the school year, so we appreciate that. Also, special thanks to the Concord Fire Department today for helping me get off of the truck without falling and hurting myself. But I appreciate them being at Winkler Middle School today and taking some time out to greet our students, and that enthusiasm was certainly felt there, so I appreciate that. The Charlotte Motor Speedway sent their mascot out to West Cabarrus High School, which was fun for our kids, and added, again, a little more enthusiasm to the situation. One of the special groups of people I want to thank are our bus drivers. We often forget that they're the first group of people that see our students, greet them during the day, and they're often the last people that our kids see when they drop them off and go home at the end of the day. So I got to speak with a lot of the bus drivers and thank them, and I just want to say special thanks to them because they keep our kids safe, and they greet them warmly and get them home safely, and their presence is surely felt, and their role is obviously one of the most important that we have. So our custodians and maintenance staff, from my view and my vision, the buildings look spectacular. Again, you can't have a good environment if you don't have a clean, safe environment, and our maintenance staff always goes above and beyond and does a great job with that. Our buildings looked fantastic today, so I thank them for that. The office staff, the instructional support staff, all the people that had an extra hand in, in making sure the buildings were ready and prepared, I thank them for their help as well. School nutrition folks, I always enjoy going to talk to them because they have a very good perspective on schools, and they always tell you the straight truth. They see all of our kids every single day, and they deal with a lot of different issues coming in and out of the lunchrooms. But they were on full force today, did a fantastic job, and were very well-prepared to make sure our kids were fed. Keeping in mind, we were 35,000-plus, their job is enormous, and they do it flawlessly and seamlessly, so I thank them for that. Special thanks to our data managers, as many of you folks know that we've transitioned to a new learning management system under the leadership of Mr. Carl Sanz and his Technology Department. They did a great job in doing that, and we will continue to work out any hiccups that come along. But again, that, that task was much larger than many people realized, and it was done quietly and efficiently, and it was very effective. Our data managers worked extremely hard to make sure that all the schedules were set, all the people were enrolled, all the things that needed to be done was accomplished before day one. So I deeply appreciate their work, and I know the effort they went into that over the last week, so I thank them for their professionalism and their work. And then lastly, I want to point out the, to our teachers, you are the glue that holds the organization together, and it's your expertise, your care, your compassion, your dedication to your craft, and your commitment to our kids that continues to put Cabarrus County Schools on the map. I talk about it all the time, that locally, statewide, and nationally, we are successful, and we achieve when our kids go out and compete, and you saw that again this evening. We start day one with world champions. Not local champions, not state champions, world champions. You heard about the other countries that they're competing against and being successful when they do that. That's a tribute to our teachers and instructional staff that are working with them every day, making sure that they're prepared. There's a lot of engineering, a lot of math, and a lot of science that goes into the VEX Robotics Program that our Board has supported, and it continues to grow, and we thank them for that. And my hat's off to our teachers. Your excellence continues to shine through on a daily basis, and I'm very thankful for all of our teachers. And lastly, and I do mean lastly this time, our families, and most importantly, our students. We're enthusiastic, just, we're very enthused to see you, we're very happy to see you back. You bring a presence, and you make the whole thing live. You make the whole thing livelier. We're here in the summer, we get tired of looking at each other and planning, we can't wait to see you coming into the buildings and being, being here every day and getting to work with you, and seeing the smiles and successes and the achievements and the perseverance and the resilience that you bring every single day. You remind us of our why, and we're very thankful and grateful that you're back into the school season, and we hope and pray that you have a wonderful, successful, happy school year and a very healthy one. And to our families, I just encourage you to get involved, as Mr. Walter said. I'll be clear about this, while we can't open the doors and let everybody come in, we want our families involved. I would ask you, if you want to be involved in the schools, please reach out to your principals, tell them how, visit often, let them know that you want to be involved and you want to be part of our success here in Cabarrus County Schools. After all, it's the families that send their students, we want to continue to build that collaborative, trusting environment. So we welcome our families to the school system, we want you in our schools, and we encourage you to get involved as much as you possibly can. And I thank, again, our teachers, our administrators, all the folks that make it a special place. So great first day, let's hope it continues to, we build on that momentum, have a great year. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kupicki. Moving on to our next section, which is Guest Speakers. So the rules and procedures for Guest Speakers are on the agenda. We've all read through that. We've had three individuals that have signed up to speak, and I'll call the first name, which is Mr. Paul Wantes, and you are speaking on the behalf of a group. If you can tell us what ISOCC is, CCS is, I appreciate that.
ISOCC, ISOCCS is a group for helping kids in the district that may not be seeing the same opportunities as others. Okay? Congratulations on making it through day one. As always, it seems to come with some changes. It seems the biggest is Infinite Campus. This replaced part of the Power School, a significant improvement, but improvement is like releases from Microsoft. It always seems you feel Microsoft delivered what Microsoft knew you really had to have. Few ever found that migration was obvious. While we move away from Power School, it still lingers, as we continue to use this to get to Infinite Campus, parent portal. Though the staff has been working for up to six months to get comfortable with Infinite Campus, the community now had about six days, and there were no provisions for just learning about Infinite Campus. It was difficult for people to learn what was being deployed in the county. You had a, you had to create an ID, and it was based on a student profile, so it was impossible without students to figure out what was going on. And it seems the system has ended up being a cluge of personal student records and apparently public postings. The web link for Power School, really the same name, says, "Find out what's going on at your school at any time, any place, and you can read our daily bulletins, catch up on class assignments." We're traditionally put in the public website for, webpage for each school. How can parents look across schools to see what kind of assignments are being given in different schools? The problem is that the portals need you to put in a student, and if you put in a student, that takes you to a school, and that means you can't see anything else that's going on in the district except for that school. Now, if you have two kids, you might see two schools, but you can't look across the district. Okay? Find out about upcoming inner-school activities from other schools. This could have been a much smoother rollout from the community and the county, not just the teachers. And looking at stu, and I do believe it's an improvement, but I don't think it was a smooth rollout. And looking at schools, let's examine how poorly we plan for the new buildings. For years, I've objected to your facility strategies with overcapacity deployments of buildings, facilities, and use of modular units. Is this what all North Carolina districts do? So I compared five large districts in the state, and Cabarrus County site occupancy is higher by as much as 183% of the other districts. But today, let's focus on the human impact of your practices. By comparing the count of school sites per large districts and the student populations, it's obvious Cabarrus County has 30 to 80% more students in each elementary building, with similar ratios for middle and high school. It seems CCS is on a path to get a single one-room schoolhouse for the district. Our future only has plans for adding a single elementary and high school, which just doesn't address the mass overpopulation. I've looked at the districts of Cabarrus, Forsyth, Cumberland, Guilford, CMS, Wake, and Wake, Wake County, I believe. They're all in the DPI, and all the information comes from there. You can get the principal's daily attendance, and that's by school, so you can count the schools, you look at the population, you average them out, and that's how all the numbers come up. They're all significantly higher in Cabarrus. Clearly, there are more students per site, but that also means the workload of some of the staff are significantly higher, who get no extra compensation. Start with the principals, doing 30 to 80% more work, cafeteria staffs having to serve up to six lunches per day, school resource officers are not deployed by student count but by site, psychologists, special needs- Psychologists, special needs teachers have significant heavier workload than those in other school districts. Retention could suffer from this if you demonstrate, if you can't demonstrate equivalent pay for equivalent work. Even the students get impacted by this, because if you have less students and the population is larger, things like a volleyball team have less kids that can actually make the team. Football team, same thing. Your roster can only be so big, a lot more kids are thrown out of the tryouts. Changing topics, we'll look at trips being taken as part of class activities. This should be covered under Board Policy 3320, School Trips. In Section C, it states, "Students must not be charged for a fee for a school trip which credit is granted." Currently, parents are being told the annual fee structure for class trips. You may choose to find that the, you may choose to find funds from the district or change the policy appropriately, but not abiding by the policy isn't right. Thanks for your time, and good luck on the journey of this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wantes. All right, our next speaker is our former board member, Keisha Sandich. It's a special day for you, but welcome.
Yep, I had to come speak to y'all on my anniversary, but who's counting them? All right, so I first want to acknowledge the immense pressures around public education and what you guys are faced with. This year alone, as it relates to federal funding freezes the uncertainty of federal funding, and then also not having a state budget, and then competing with charter and public schools, so I do understand that. But I'm coming today to talk with you guys about something that I've spoken with you about before, which is lunch balances. Rob, you know, I text you today to understand if there was a plan in place and if you guys had been talking about it. I came to your last financial, or the first financial committee meeting where it was discussed about lunch balances, and the staff were supposed to bring you a plan of how you were going to address that this school year. I watched the board meeting from last week, and I didn't see any plans discussed. I know that doesn't mean that there isn't discussions happening on the back end, but I do know that we've started school today, congratulations on that, and there is no plan that has been discussed with those schools that I understand as a public, a member of the public. I am truly concerned in the beginning phases about lunch debt. I don't want us to get to May 2026, and we are tens of thousands of dollars in lunch debt. I do think that the school district has tried many things. I don't know the answers, I am but one person, but I do know that we need to talk about it. Rob, I've also sent several people your way to talk with you about lunch balances that are interested in helping in some capacity. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if those discussions have occurred and what those discussions were. I do want to just say that there is potential in this county. We have over 200,000 residents. We are a thriving county, and we have money regardless of what folks will make us believe. We have money, and then I know that there are several of you that have direct contact and connections to our state legislatures. You guys meet with them, you guys can pick up the phone and have a straight dial into them to tell them, hey, this is what we need in our district. And that may be happening, but I'm not seeing that with us running in a deficit, with us not having what we need to retain teachers, retain staff, make sure that all of our bus routes are covered, make sure that our lunch debt is not tens of thousands of dollars every year. And I'll tell you that principals worry about that. That is not a worry that we need to have on them. Every single week, there is a breakdown that goes to every single principal about their lunch debt. They know every week what they owe. If that is the case, we have an opportunity every week to draft a solution, and I don't see us doing that. Let's get on it, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandich. I encourage you to come to our next Finance Committee meeting. Our last speaker is Keisha Garrido. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Dr. Kavicki and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Keisha Garrido, and my husband Ben and I are proud parents of four children who attend Mount Pleasant Schools. We have a second grader, a seventh grader, and twin seniors. You may remember that I spoke at the May meeting advocating for Coach Turlocker and questioning transactions involving the Mount Pleasant High School Athletics accounts. I'm here tonight to update you that I still have no resolution to my concerns. I originally requested public records on 417, and as of this evening, have not received them in their entirety. The last update I received was June 16th. Mr. Fur can tell you that I've worn him out asking for updates. Dr. Williams, from my understanding, oversaw the investigation of the transactions in question, including money from the track account being used to purchase dry raceboards for football, thousands of dollars being raised for a weight room expansion that never happened, and volleyball funds being moved to the General Athletic Fund. The last email I received from Dr. Williams on 5:30 stated no improper spending occurred. I emailed him back seeking clarification, and tried to speak to him at the following meeting, and he reiterated there was no improper spending, and that's all I could say about the matter. Dr. Kavicki, you seemed invested when we spoke about this back in April and May, and promised you would take a look at it after graduation. I've never heard from you. You came and shook my hand at last month's meeting, and promised a call, and I'm still waiting, and would gladly accept that call. If there truly was no improper spending, please stand behind your findings and explain your stance. In conclusion, the CCS website states, "Public record requests will be processed as quickly as possible." We are now almost at the four-month mark. I ask that you'll please take a look at our football program, please find out why we've lost so many assistant coaches over the past three years, and while several seniors have moved homes to play at a different school this year. And off a different topic here, but a show of hands, our librarians and having access to the library, important aspects of education in your opinion. Our librarian media specialist was moved into a classroom for this year, so she opted to move to a different school. So currently, we do not have a librarian, and our children don't have access to the library at the high school. My daughter tried to turn books in today, and the door was locked, so that's a concern I have. Our principal, Lacey Jacobs, is here. I did address that with her, and I've addressed all of my concerns with her, and I just asked that you'll please just take a good look at our school. We lost our two awesome counselors, they left our school. My daughter doesn't have a teacher for her AP Calculus, that teacher also left at the beginning of this week, so she has a online, like, video class, I think from Concord High, with a sub in the room. So so many issues at Mount Pleasant, and I just wish that you'll please just dive deep. And again, I would love to speak to anyone who can offer me any insight on any of the things that are going on at our school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the update on the situation. So that was the end of our guest speaker portion of the meeting. We do have, moving on to section, next section is Report section, Committee Reports. I know we haven't had any committee meetings, but if any board member wants to offer any comments, feel free. Shannon?
I have been the liaison to the City of Kannapolis, but I've always had a conflict with their meetings. So I'm excited to announce that they are going to start televising their meetings. They decided that at their June 23 meeting, and they're going to start streaming their meetings this month, just like we do for the school board. You should be able to find the City of Kannapolis meetings on YouTube now. So for those of us that can't go to the city council meetings, we can watch those meetings that are going to be televised on YouTube. So that's exciting. And another thing is I have an update for the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. They are celebrating their 25th year. They have been around for a while, and have really supported our public schools. They just finished their first phase of a school supply. They worked with and partnered with the Afton Sunset Rotary Club, and they've delivered those supplies directly to the schools. They will have a second phase on August 20th, and you can go to the foundation website to see those drop-off locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Anybody else? All right. We will move on to Section Nine, the Approval of our Consent Agenda, and these are all the items we have discussed in detail last week and all were in agreement with, so I would need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda as it was presented. Thank you, Mr. Tredaway. And a second by Mr. Mills. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, let's vote on that one. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda has been approved. And I think the next item is Board Meeting Calendar Adjustment, and these are, we've had a planning meeting in January, I think we had another one in the spring, and we're trying to consider one for the fall. And there were some ideas on what the topics would be, nothing's been set yet. I think part of that was a request to really dig into the data when we actually get the data, and the data should be released fairly soon on how our scores are and how our schools are doing. So that would give the board an opportunity to do that, and also the board may have an opportunity to do some board training. And then again, any board member is, can make a suggestion on any additional topics for that, that meeting, which would be a public meeting. We have three dates that were proposed for those, for that, and I'm just going to open it up to have that discussion on which date works best for you all, and hopefully Laura, you can kind of collect that, and we can set a date for that meeting. Yeah, Dr. Kavicki?
I would ask the board if they could accommodate September 29th, that would be the best date for us, especially in light of the anticipation of our test scores being released, and within the next month, that would be a very good date to talk. It'd be a lot easier then, we could plan that out with our Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. Sarah Reeves, and obviously our technology lead, Mr. Carl Sanz, that would be a very good date to, it'd be timely and recent if we could all accommodate that, that would work the best for us. I would just ask consideration of that date. September 29th?
The first date, the first option?
Yes, ma'am.
And these are all on, well, two of them are on Mondays, one's on a Thursday.
We tried to keep it Monday, thinking in line that that's your normal board day, so we were hoping that maybe we could accommodate the Monday.
Excellent. So I'm good. Pam, you think that works for you, too? Okay, well, it looks like we have an agreement. So to adjust the calendar, we actually need a motion and a second for that. All right, motion by Ms. Lancaster, second by Ms. Escobar, all in favor of adding the Fall Planning Session to our calendar, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, that meeting will be added.
Yes, sir.
Yes, 6:00 PM. So that concludes our action items. So next item is convening closed sessions, so we do have a need for a closed session. Don't need a motion and a second to do that, and I guess I should read through this. To prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of the state of North Car, state, the state or the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes pursuant to General Statute 14331811A1, to consult with an attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 14331811A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6. Did I get that motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Mr. Mills, second by Mr. Tredaway. All in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, we will now move into closed session, and say goodnight to our listening audience. Thank you for being here, and we'll see you next month.